Good evening. I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. This evening, we have all councilors present, with the exception of Councilor Welton and Councilor Mazzus. We have two items on the agenda. The first one is the local reprecincting standards and process, and the second one we'll cover in a bit. But this evening, I'd like to welcome Michael Owens from the Secretary of State's office. And he's here tonight to just give us all an overview of the local reprecincting process we'll be taking part in over the next few months. And he's, once again, it's just an overview and an outline of the process. We're not going to start delving into the specifics of PBID's awards and precincts at this time, but once again, just to give us all an overview so we can be informed about the process and the next steps. So with that, I'd like to ask Michael Owens. Actually, I would like to just mention that we do have some members of the working group. And I, at the last meeting, as required, each community, town or city in Massachusetts, forms a working group to do the majority of the work, to bring it before the local board for the final discussion. But once again, the working group is made up of, will be made up of City Clerk Allison Danforth, Tim Spinos, the former city clerk, City Solicitor Don Kahn, members of the Board of Registars, Will Politz from City Engineering, and we'll also have a geographic information system analyst who will help us with the mapping and all that type of work. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Owens to kick it off. Thank you. Priya, can you hear anything? I just want to check on the volume for the attendees.
No.
Okay. Folks, we're going to take a two-minute recess just to work on the audio. Test, test. Can anyone hear on the Zoom? Audrey, anything? Mic check. Can anyone hear us on the screen? Mr. Owens, can you hear us? Hello, 1-2. Can you hear me on Zoom? Can you hear me on Zoom?
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
I would think if Allison unmuted, then we should be able to hear it if she's in the meeting, right? Their mic is muted.
So, it looks like she just wrote back, "I can hear you over my laptop, but the sound isn't coming over the speakers for the room."
Oh, okay.
So I better mute.
Hey, folks, just checking those on Zoom. Can you hear anything coming from the screen?
And I will bring them up here on the screen in just a moment. But just to give you kind of the, I'll give you the kind of skeleton overview tonight. Reprecincting is a process which every city and town in the Commonwealth must go through at the completion of the 10-year census. So once the census, once the federal census is complete by the U.S. Census Bureau, all cities and towns in Massachusetts are required to reprecinct, or to essentially redraw their voting maps based upon that census data. So the way that, the way we draw the maps is we get what's called census blocks from the Census Bureau. And those census blocks are what you will use essentially to create a map. Census blocks are a little bit different than what we think of when we, we think of a, a city block. So a census block is not the same as a city block. A census block is a geographic area defined by the Census Bureau, and it has a certain population value with it. So, you know, a census block could be, for example, one, one cul-de-sac and a huge area of, of town forests, for example. So that is, you know, the, that's where things get tricky when you start to move things around, because not all census blocks are the same size or shape. And the way the Census Block, Census Bureau draws these blocks is by geographical features. So, for example,
Excuse me, Mr. Owens?
You can't, you can't cut a street in half, for example. Or, sorry, you can't cut a, a house in half, for example. It would have to be bound by roads, rivers, streams, those types of things. So, so So, so the, the blocks are drawn by those geographical features. So, so the, the blocks are drawn by those geographical features. And within that feature, whatever, you know, that, whatever is the appropriate geographic And within that feature, whatever, you know, that, whatever is the appropriate geographic features that make up that block, it will have a population assigned with it. features that make up that block, it will have a population assigned with it. But don't worry about that for right now. But don't worry about that for right now. That's kind of, you know, getting into the weeds. That's kind of, you know, getting into the weeds. But just to give you an idea of how, you know, the, the, those are kind of the building But just to give you an idea of how, you know, the, the, those are kind of the building blocks that we use to create maps. blocks that we use to create maps. And they are, they're geographic areas that are defined by the Census Bureau. And they are, they're geographic areas that are defined by the Census Bureau. But just in terms of the process of represincting, I can share with you, I'm going to pull up But just in terms of the process of represincting, I can share with you, I'm going to pull up on my screen, a couple, a couple things here. on my screen, a couple, a couple things here. Oh, so it looks like I'm not allowed to share. Oh, so it looks like I'm not allowed to share. I don't know if maybe Clerk Dunforth can change that. I don't know if maybe Clerk Dunforth can change that. If not, I can just, oh, I guess, I guess it's now changed. If not, I can just, oh, I guess, I guess it's now changed. I think I can share. I think I can share. So I have this pulled up on the screen. So I have this pulled up on the screen. It says local process for represincting. It says local process for represincting. Everybody can see that? Everybody can see that? Yeah, it looks like, okay, very good. Yeah, it looks like, okay, very good. So as I mentioned, every city and town is required to go through this process of represincting So as I mentioned, every city and town is required to go through this process of represincting at the completion of the U.S. at the completion of the U.S. Census. Census. And the way, the way each city, the way the, you know, City of PBD would do that is by And the way, the way each city, the way the, you know, City of PBD would do that is by this process here. this process here. The first step is to form a working group. The first step is to form a working group. Now, this isn't a requirement. Now, this isn't a requirement. This is just kind of what our office has deemed as best practice, but it's entirely This is just kind of what our office has deemed as best practice, but it's entirely up to you how, how you want to, how you want to actually create the maps, whether that's up to you how, how you want to, how you want to actually create the maps, whether that's done through a working group or, 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 you know, just with the help of a GIS person done through a working group or, 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 you know, just with the help of a GIS person or in some other way. or in some other way. But either way, the process starts with forming the, the group or the people that will be But either way, the process starts with forming the, the group or the people that will be involved in creation of the map. involved in creation of the map. The working group, if you are to form one, would have, these are some of the recommendations. The working group, if you are to form one, would have, these are some of the recommendations. A GIS coordinator, as they are the ones that will actually do the technical mapping, you A GIS coordinator, as they are the ones that will actually do the technical mapping, you know, using the actual technology to create maps. know, using the actual technology to create maps. Planning Department representatives, that's helpful, of course, to understand future development Planning Department representatives, that's helpful, of course, to understand future development and, and other considerations. and, and other considerations. Engineering department, elections, city or town clerk, and, and city or town solicitor Engineering department, elections, city or town clerk, and, and city or town solicitor or legal counsel is, is of course a good choice also. or legal counsel is, is of course a good choice also. But But
Excuse me, Michael, this is Judy. Excuse me, Michael, this is Judy. If I could just interrupt for a quick second, I just got a message from Allison that they If I could just interrupt for a quick second, I just got a message from Allison that they really can't hear you clearly. really can't hear you clearly. So she asked me if I could just answer that for a second. So she asked me if I could just answer that for a second.
Sure. Sure.
Thanks. Thanks. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. No, that's okay. Can everyone else on the Zoom hear me though, clearly? Can everyone else on the Zoom hear me though, clearly?
I can, yes. I can, yes.
Okay. Okay.
She, I got another message. She, I got another message. She thinks your microphone may be the issue. She thinks your microphone may be the issue. Not sure. Not sure.
Everyone, I think everyone can hear, I mean, if everyone on the Zoom can hear me, Everyone, I think everyone can hear, I mean, if everyone on the Zoom can hear me, okay. okay. And I, I think I'm all the way turned up. And I, I think I'm all the way turned up. Let me see if I can, if there's anything else I can do. Let me see if I can, if there's anything else I can do. Maybe if you want to let her know that the Zoom can hear me. Maybe if you want to let her know that the Zoom can hear me. I'm going to stop sharing so I can try to. I'm going to stop sharing so I can try to. Yeah, so both of my volumes are all the way up. Yeah, so both of my volumes are all the way up. My output. My output.
So, Michael, she's asking if you could call in using your phone for the audio. So, Michael, she's asking if you could call in using your phone for the audio.
Sure, let me, um, Sure, let me, um,
Okay. Okay.
I will try. I will try. It is hooked up the conference system here, so I'm going to try and let's see what we It is hooked up the conference system here, so I'm going to try and let's see what we can do. can do.
Okay, great. Okay, great. I'll let her know that. I'll let her know that.
Thank you. Thank you.
It, she did add, make sure to shut off the other device. It, she did add, make sure to shut off the other device.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I'm so sorry, everyone. I'm so sorry, everyone. I have another commitment at seven. I have another commitment at seven. I really thought this would be over by then. I really thought this would be over by then. Judy, maybe you can, we can connect afterwards. Judy, maybe you can, we can connect afterwards.
Sure, yep. Sure, yep.
Let me know. Let me know. Thanks. Thanks.
You bet. You bet. Take care. Take care.
Enter your meeting ID, followed by Enter your meeting ID, followed by
Okay, folks, we had some technical difficulties in the first part of the committee of the whole hearing regarding the represincting. Just for those that may not have heard it, we are going to reschedule that portion because it's, the technology was making it difficult to hear the participants. At this point, we're going to move on to the second agenda item of the committee of the whole this evening, which is discussion of future public meetings, including use of remote participation, which is somewhat ironic. But, you know, as many councils know and the general public, we've been acting, this council has been acting in a hybrid format, both councils meeting in public as well as having the Zoom technology for public participation as well as participation from applicants. So given the governor's recent legislation signing into law, allowing suspension of certain provisions of the open meeting law until next April, I thought it was timely that we all kind of, you know, have a meeting and decide how we want to continue future public meetings, whether we want to make any changes, and, you know, just continue with the same format. Certainly just want to kind of just get everyone's input opinions. And certainly, the intent would be to come out with a motion this evening for the full council on how we want to conduct public hearings. Certainly, I want to just mention one thing. I'm in favor generally of the Zoom technology and remote participation, but we had our technical difficulties here, but it's worked pretty well over the last year and a half. One thing I did want to, for councils to consider as I opened up to the floor, is that one thing I'd like to see going forward or recommend is that we move to have either the applicant or their, you know, representative attend the council for a special hearing, attend the meeting in person. I think it's important that we have someone who's representing either the applicant or the applicant here to face the council, but also face any kind of general public that wants to speak either in favor or in opposition. And just for context, certainly, the current special permit hearing rules of the council do require the owner of the property or his representative as specified on a special permit to be present at the time of the public hearing. Certainly, we've relaxed some things with the, due to the pandemic. So anyways, at this point, I'll, I'll stop and see if anyone wants to comment. So I'll turn it over to Councilor Melville.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm fine with the status quo, and I think it makes sense if one representative of the applicant is here. But what I really, what we really got to make sure is that we have a couple of technical people. We've done a really good job, I thought, from the start of March of last year till now. But I thought, I think the last few meetings, we've had technical issues, we've been delayed. And I, this is, you know, I think if we're going to continue down this path, then we've got to ensure that access is here, that when we're going to have a meeting, that the meeting is, you know, technically sound, that we can hear. I think the acoustics is a problem. And all of those, in my opinion, really need to be addressed before we have the next, the next meeting, so that we're not wasting applicants' time, our time, and that, you know, we can feel, a major part of this is the confidence of saying, when I talk into the microphone, everybody can hear us. That's part of the, the, the technology is what's given us this opportunity. So I really do think that's an important part of it. And I, and honestly, if this continues, then I think we got to rethink it. So that's my view. Thank you.
Well said. Any other councils? Councilor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Councilor Melville. I just want to back up and say, Councilor Rozignol did a wonderful job getting us to the point where we were at and when we eased up the restrictions. And you've taken it from there. And I think it's a good recommendation, as Councilor Melville said, to have technical support because unfortunately, as Councilor Melville said, the acoustics in this hall are awful for us being able to hear via remote. So that would be my recommendation, as Councilor Melville said, but keep up the good work. Thank you.
Councilor Manny Martin, then Councilor Haslaw.
Thank you very much. Through you to the clerk, Allison, I know that you really did yeoman's work when this first was dropped on us at the beginning of the pandemic to operate by Zoom. And I know that there were a lot of kinks to iron out along the way, and you did a great job in doing that. And it was extremely fluid process that you had to figure out. So I want to ask you now, your thoughts on how we're doing now? Should we, your opinion on it? Nobody has been really involved in this to the degree that you have with every, all the moving parts. So I'd like to know your thoughts on it. And also, how much, I know it was overwhelming, but you, you pulled it off and you had less staff in the office, you were understaffed. It was really quite amazing that, that you accomplished all that you did. And I want to know now, how much work is it for you? Is it overburdening? And I need your opinion on this before I formulate my own. And I would also echo Councilor Melville and Councilor Gould's concerns about the technology and the issues that we're having. But I really want to hear from you. Nobody knows this better than you. Well, I have many thoughts on it. I, I think it's great that we have participation by people via Zoom. I don't think it's too, a great, we don't have a great deal more participation numbers-wise. It's not that much more work on my end. I think the, it's not just the acoustics in the auditorium, it's the speakers that we're listening to. When people are attending via Zoom, we're not getting it through the speakers on our desks. We're just getting it from boxes up on there, and it bounces. And I think we do people a disservice when we can't hear what they're saying. And I also think there's a technical issue. I'm running a meeting, I'm running the Zoom, I can't run everything else that's going on over there. If people are having technical issues at home because they don't have a, a microphone, you need a microphone, an external microphone like we have in order for us to hear. As you saw this evening with Michael Owens, he had a microphone on his desk that performed both functions, and he was, you know, a few feet away from it, and that's why we had a hard time hearing him. So we have issues. We, we need, we need help with this, the microphones, the speakers, we need someone to set it up. PAT is doing a yeoman's job out in the back room. They can't be out in the front room and out in the back room. And so we need technical help to do that. And if all those ducks are in a row, then that's great. We'll continue to do it. Thank you, Allison. Very well put. I think you've pointed out that we have a long way to go. It's not insurmountable, but we certainly need a lot of fine tuning. So if we can work towards rectifying all of these technical and other issues that we have that you've, you pointed out, maybe we can get there. But I think that there is a lot of work to be done. And I thank you very much for all the work that you have done to, to get us where we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Manny Martin. Councilor Haslaw.
Thank you. So
Thank you. So I kind of echo the comments of the previous councilors. A couple of things I just want to understand is, I believe that Jim Palmer from PATV has been helping, assisting us throughout this whole process, but it's my understanding he's really been doing this, you know, not under the realm of his duties maybe as a, you know, just as a good deed, a good citizen, in that, you know, I believe that he's not pointing on continuing this. And so as we saw tonight, we had other technical people from the building, they came up and they tried to help. What I'm trying to understand, if we're going to go forward with this process, you know, who is the point person? Who is the person who's going to be assisting when we have problems? Who is the person who's going to show up before the meeting, stay at the meeting? And I don't think it's appropriate that Mr. Palmer do that. And I'm trying to understand who is. And, you know, I'm not -- I don't know if you have any insight. If you don't, I wouldn't expect you to counsel president, but that's something that I'm trying to understand. Do we have to compensate somebody to do that? So -- and then the other point, and I can't emphasize enough, I have an extremely hard time hearing. And so as you said, Cork Danforth, it doesn't come through here. Even when we have regular meetings sometimes, we're always futzing with the speakers up front. I know when the public comes, they can't hear. We at least have the speaker on our desk sometimes. But the big problem is, with this whole remote situation, we don't have the speakers. We just have it. So I have -- my confidence is -- I'm concerned because I agree with you that the petitioner should show up, and the lawyer should show up if they show up for the petition, and I think you mentioned maybe the business owner. At what point do we start? Because we have people who speak in, whether it be in favor or in opposition, and I just can't hear. And it's, you know, it's almost to the point of embarrassing. And I know, you know, Council Gravel, when he was here, he tried to get this rectified. I don't know. I'm not an audiovisual guy, but I know that we have issues, we have problems, and that we really, really need to take these six or seven weeks to figure it out. So I think, as I said, we need to figure out who's the point person, who's going to do it, you know, make sure that -- do we need a person in the budget? Do we not? Is there someone on staff who's going to do it? And once again, the whole issue of not being able to hear people, more importantly, who are speaking from Zoom, I just can't hear them. It continues to be a problem. We muddle through it at times, but it's, you know, I'm kind of -- I don't want to muddle through. I want to do, I think everyone wants to be able to hear properly, you know. I'm sure you agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Sassla. I take a couple of things just as to go through. As of right now, the council, probably a year ago, maybe longer, requested that someone from IT be in the hall, be up here to take care of these. Jim Palmer from PAT has been really doing on his own dual jobs, as you know, you know, running the camera, doing that kind of work, fixing cameras up there when he has to, and also helping with the audio. So I did send an email to the mayor saying that Jim Palmer, just because of his own work schedule, wasn't going to be available to take those additional duties on. So I specifically requested that we have someone from IT on staff at our meetings at all times to take care of that, because, you know, I'm not a tech -- I can barely turn on my laptop, and Allison is the city clerk running the meeting and doing all that type of stuff. We just can't do that. And certainly, the last two meetings, in my opinion, have been very difficult from a Zoom audio issue. If -- other than that, I think we've done a decent job in terms of doing it, in terms of being able to hear it. But it's crucial if we're going to have a remote participation for someone who has daycare issues, coming home from work, taking care of their parents, or anything, a conflict, or doesn't want to come all the way down, you know, and wait in line to talk with people. They just want to be able to have their say at that point in time. That's the beauty of remote participation. The more we can allow people to take part in this process, the better. But certainly, we're not, I can promise you this, not going to have hearings like we just did a few moments ago. It's embarrassing on professional, and it's not the way we serve our residents or citizens. So I can tell you this. We haven't, as you know, we paid a lot of money for this audio system, so I'm still amazed at why we still have issues. But anyways, kind of a kitchen sink response, but I did want to give you at least my response on that with kind of how we're going to handle this going forward. Council Sassla.
So did you get a response from the mayor's office as far as commitment of someone being here, and is that person the right person, I guess? What was the answer?
As you saw, we had IT here helping out. So those are the people that are responsible. That's their job, to work on the systems. The mayor has asked them to be and required them to be here at these hearings. So that's who those folks were. Thank you. Councilor Sharice.
Thank you, Council President. And I know that even before remote, when we had people here, there was always, I can't hear that person, I can't hear the speaker. And it was different, I know, maybe different audio that was here then, but it still goes on. Sometimes I still can't hear when someone's at the podium. And I think there's a lot of factors. I know in the beginning, we were actually promoting more people to do the remote. And I'm questioning, should we -- I know you mentioned it requiring at least one person who's here for a special permit to be present. My thoughts is that we changed that the way we used to promote more of a remote participation to more in-person as much as we can. I know we all want to be safe, but I think we should really start pushing to go back to have a in-person, promote that more. The other question I had would be, could we have somebody here from a, even the chorus club, the drama club at the high school, or someone who knows a lot about the audio in auditoriums to come here? And maybe we need to position ourselves and the audience a little different so they'd be able to hear. I know when you get closer to the speakers in the stage, it's harder to hear because of the way the speakers are focused. So just a thought, maybe we could get somebody with expertise and an audio sound that could maybe rearrange the way we sit. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sharice. Councilor Rosignol, then Councilor Turco, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo a couple of sentiments from the councilors. First of all, Allison, in the beginning of this whole process, was amazing getting this off the ground. So I definitely wanted to echo that comment. In the beginning, this was an extremely difficult process, and Allison was absolutely doing everything in her power to not only run the meetings, but to make sure that all of the technical support was there. And it was daunting. One of the requests that Allison and I put into the mayor's office is to have somebody here all the time. Frank from IT is here all the time. Jim's been doing such an amazing job, to be honest with you. He's downstairs, he is in this building. He is representing the city to help us. Like I said, Jim's been doing such an amazing job, he hasn't come upstairs. My opinion is, I think, in the beginning of the meeting, and I'll make this even as a formal request if need be, that we, before we start our meetings, Frank comes up and makes sure that everything is the way it should be. Right now, we can hear each other, we're speaking clearly, I can understand everybody that has spoken so far. That's because of what they've done in the last 20 minutes. So my opinion is, instead of trying to troubleshoot when something goes wrong, I think the issue as far as us being able to hear each other and understand the Zoom is making sure that all the bugs are worked out before the meeting starts so that if anything happens, it's kind of already been worked out before the meeting and not during it. So that would be my opinion as far as at least clarity and how we -- how IT handles our meetings. The second piece, and I agree with you, Mr. President, I absolutely think the Zoom platform right now is vital for residents. It gives them another avenue to be able to interact with the council. So they don't have to find a sitter, find transportation, or whatever the issue it is that they are having to come to City Hall. So having the public's ability to remote access into this meeting, I think, is vital. So I do think that we need to maintain the Zoom platform. I think we've done a great job over this past year trying to fine tune it. Are there glitches in the system? Of course there are. Are there glitches with technology? Absolutely. People's cables go out, their computers break, there are all kinds of IT issues that sometimes a gremlin just happens. So you're still going to have those issues. And if a resident really wants to make sure that their voice is heard, they're still able to come down and use the Zoom platform as almost an ancillary or a secondary means. So those are my thoughts on this. I think, Council O'Neill, you've done a great job coming out of the pandemic and going from a full remote participation to a hybrid. And I think we just keep steadying the course and keep moving in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rosignol. Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't hop on the issue too much longer. So basically, I'll say, although I'm not personally a fan of Zoom, I think we're all sick of it, you know. It's been a long year and a half on Zoom, but I will say it does present that option to people on the occasional time that they may need it. So as far as using Zoom and continuing with Zoom, I'm in favor of that. The sound issues is where I think we're kind of talking to the wrong people here. I think we, yes, we have an IT department. I'm not quite sure that their expertise is acoustics in a building. And what bothers me most is that when this was installed, I think upwards of about two to three years ago, we've had issues since then, from the day of install. And it's been constant. Recent meetings, we've had people in the seats behind where we sit, and they can't hear us still. So I'm thinking, rather than going to our own IT that didn't install this and left to deal with the issues, why are we not going to the company that installed it and have them come before this council participate in a meeting? Let's see, you know, I'd like to have them here. I think, if my memory serves me, we paid about $75,000 in that ballpark for the sound system. It has never worked. I think the priority for the installers may have been the acoustics for a hall for concerts, because the sound in the concerts is incredible. But I think they put meetings as a secondary when really, for the people of PBD, it should be a primary, because that's what it's mostly used for, is meetings. So I would suggest, instead of going to our IT department, that we have the company that installed it come here, participate in a meeting, and be available for us to. Maybe we need more speakers at a lower level. Maybe we need speakers on the front of the desks. Maybe we need them down below the stage. We know the sound travels up. The speakers are up there already above our heads. So there's going to be other options, and that's what I would be in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Turco. Councilor Mazzulis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I don't want to beat this issue too. I think everybody's thrown their two cents into this. But Council Turco kind of reminded me, when I couldn't hear what was going on, and I had to say, John, and John said to me, Jim, it's what you said two years ago, that if I can't hear what's going on here, I'm walking out of here. And I remember saying that to him, okay? And that's out of frustration of not being able to hear what's going on. We have an agenda we're trying to follow. And how do you follow an agenda if you don't know what's going on? And that's one of the problems I have, because I'm the oldest one in the room here, and I'm half deaf, you know, and I have a problem trying to pay attention. But I go back to the '80s when I got on this council. That was one of the first issues we discussed. In the '90s, that was another issue we discussed again. In the '80s, we spent money with Mayor Turegian doing this, and again in the '90s, replacing all the audio systems we had. And we just went from dollar to dollar to dollar. And a couple of years ago, as John said, we spent seventy-some odd thousand dollars. And I don't feel like going looking for an answer to this. We've already spent the money, get the people that installed our system, and answer the questions. And they guaranteed us back then that this system was going to work. Well, if this is their guarantee, I mean, they're in trouble. Get them back here to answer some questions, Mr. Jim. And basically, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mazzulis. Council Gould.
Thank you again. I'm sorry. I don't mean to beat this up, but Allison, I feel like I neglected to mention you, and I apologize. Councilor Rosignol, Council O'Neill have done a great job, and none of it would have been able to do without you. Councilor Turco is right on. I believe we spent more than $75,000, and Councilor Gravel was heavily involved in it. And I believe the company's name was Signet. So I'm all for getting them in here and having them review it and tell us what they recommend, even if it is, to Councilor Turco's point, putting speakers elsewhere in the hall. But thank you. That's my two cents worth. Thank you.
And thank you, Council Gould. And I think that would be, as part of this, a kind of reassessment going forward with the Zoom technology, audio. I think we do need to get the, I call them the consultant or the sound engineer people to come back and look at this to see what's going on as part of it. And certainly, our information and technology people would still be here and to be able to help with audio. But yeah, we need to go forward in a good path. I don't know what the contract is, whether, you know, we had a certain warranty, and they don't come back, and it costs. So certainly, I'd like to have them come back, but that's all part of it. And certainly, I think that's something that we'll circle back with the mayor, you know, about the challenges we're having. I mean, the audio tonight is, right now, is great. I can hear all of you. But we obviously want to kind of make sure that going forward, once again, if people are here trying to participate and we can't hear them or hear each other, then this is all for naught, and it just obviously creates all sorts of problems in making sure that we're hearing the voices of the public as well as the applicants. Are there any other councilors who wanted to, I guess, discuss the issue at this time? If not, I'd probably make a motion that -- offer a motion, you know, for the council's consideration regarding going forward with public meetings. So I guess for your consideration, I would make the motion, or request the motion be made, that the PBD City Council will continue holding its meetings in person at Wigan Hall with continued remote participation by Zoom for the members of the public, as well as any councilor if necessary. Applicants or their representatives will be required to attend their special hearings in person at the Wigan Auditorium. And I would ask for anyone to make that motion. Thank you, Council Gould. You've heard the motion. On the motion? Any discussion? Hearing and roll call vote, please.
Councilors Gould, Maney Martin, Sassla, Welton, I'm sorry, Charis, McGinn, Mazzulis, Turco, Rosignol, Melville, O'Neill. Motion carries, ten to zero.
Thank you, councilors. Your patience will now adjourn the Committee of the Whole.
One question.
Council Turco.
Mr. President, I know you said that you would like to, you know, request the mayor's assistance on this. I'd like to make an official motion that we ask, if the name is Signet, that they appear before us at the next available meeting. If that has to be done under the auspices of the Committee of the Whole, then so be it. But I would like them to be here to listen to the meeting, to see what happens during a meeting, and then answer any questions posed by the council. So moved.
On the motion, Councilor Turco, great, great motion. I know we're trying to get that. I think we'd also add, if I could, I would amend that a motion to add, the community developing who is responsible for, you know, the overall operation of Wigan Hall, that we work through them to get that accomplished, if you're so inclined.
That's fine with me. Thank you.
On the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, it's a vote. So at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee of the Whole.
To adjourn.
You've heard the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, it's a vote. Thank you. This meeting's adjourned.